7:04. The time is 7:04 and we will convene the Town of Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission for its regular meeting on Monday, December 11th, 2023. The meeting will come to order and we'll look at the seating of alternates. We have a full complement of commission members. So Alex and Steve, well, we love having you on and want to, you know, have you partake as best you can. You won't be voting tonight. We won't be seating. We have a full complement. And I'm not missing Doug at this point, am I? No. Okay. All right, um, approval of minutes from November 13th, 2023. Is there any discussion, corrections, edits that anyone can share regarding the November 13th minutes? Hearing none, I move for a motion to accept the minutes from November 13th.
I'll make that motion, Jeff.
Jeff Schillinger, thank you, Jeff.
Janet, I'll second.
Janet, second.
I can't hear it.
And Valerie, are you okay? Can you hear us?
I, I can't hear anything.
At all?
I can, yeah, I can hear a little bit, but it doesn't seem very loud. I'll, I'll be all right. I'll be all right. Go ahead.
Okay, we started plus the video, so hopefully the video will work for you too. Thank you.
Well, sometimes if you log off and log back on, it improves it.
That's true. Just like your screen freezing. You might want to try that if you think it'll get better because you can always catch up with the video. Okay, um, looking for, we got a first, we got a second. All those in favor of accepting the minutes from November 13th, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, now we open it up for public comment for items not listed on the current agenda. And I see Christina Sebo with a hand up. Christine, please go right ahead. You're muted. There you go.
Christina Sebo, 91 Perry Hill Road, Ashford, Connecticut. Um, I would just like to know, given the somewhat abbreviated and dare I say flawed survey, how will the comments from the survey be handled in the analysis? Um, will they be provided publicly? If not, how might the public get access to this important feedback and information from the Ashford citizens?
Okay. Your questions regarding the survey results?
Yes, and the analysis and the, and the ability for the citizens to see the comments because those may be the most important part of what you get.
Okay, do you have anything else?
Not for this section, no.
Okay, thank you. Um, I can tell you that the survey results will be shared with the public in their entirety. Um, the numbers as when for each of the questions as well as the narrative input. Um, Mike does a great job of compiling that and putting that out onto the website for availability to the public. Um, we could potentially also put them out. We haven't talked about how we're going to show them, but we could also put them out in the citizen itself. It would obviously be the probably, it would probably, well, we could potentially make the January citizen because our, our meeting is January 8th. And uh, we have to submit by the 15th, so we could have it in for the January.
No, that would be the February citizen.
Oh, I'm sorry, the February. Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry, wrong month. Get that back. It's okay because I'm looking at a November calendar right now because I didn't even flip it on my wall. So that doesn't help. So we will, our attempt will be to both share it to the website as well as putting it into the citizen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Jeff, this is Dick. Depending upon the respondents we have, you, you well could have a hundred comments and may exceed the ability to put that all in the citizen.
Right.
It will, it I don't know what to say besides putting it online because we won't have a drafted piece or we won't be printing them up and sending them out in any way. So putting it on the website will be the first primary if we can fit into the citizen, whatever we can fit in. If we have uh, comments that are at least similar in nature as to what they're stating, we'll try and quantify those and qualify them. So, but thank you, Dick. Yes, you're right. It could be potentially large. Uh, next up, Nora Galvin, Nora.
Hi, Nora Galvin, 39 Barlow Mill Road. Uh, recently I've been hearing about buildable lot standards. These standards define limitations of a building site such as slope, impervious cover, riparian and wetland buffers, and stormwater discharge. As I understand it, these standards are not part of the current regulations. Uh, my question is whether the Planning and Zoning Commission will be considering these standards when deciding upon changes to the regulations for the IID zone.
Um, normally what we're not doing, I, I was kind of setting a bad precedent here, but that's okay. Um, we don't normally respond to questions from the public, public make a comment and then we refer back to it to a meeting or something. However, what I would like to share is that uh, the standards for they will likely go through the consideration of what you're talking about because it has been such an issue and it has uh, led us to have to look at the development of that area and what it entails. And as you said, there has been a lot of public comment about it. So uh, unless someone else on the commission has uh, something adamant, it will be something that will be considered as we evaluate the use for that zone.
Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, Mr. Charles Vidic.
Uh, thank you Chairman Silver Smith. Um, I guess the only reason I'm, um, is commenting is I do see that there's reference to reports from C. Vidic in the correspondence, but when I went online, I couldn't find any documents related to the correspondence that I submitted. So I wondered if you actually received them and they've been received by the commission members.
I can respond to that, Mr. Vidic, and um, uh, in it was basically, I'll, I'll, I'll put it right up front. It was a mistake on my part. Everything falls onto my shoulders. Uh, in my discussions with the CEO regarding our agenda, uh, from material, your material that you sent to us were received into the office 12:05 and it was being reviewed, uh, excuse me, on 12:04 and it was reviewed on 12:05. Um, the, the reports that you provided, um, I felt were needed to be fully addressed and fully, they're very detailed, obviously. And we know we've gone through that situation in the past where we were uh, in previous hearings for um, the two ID zone, the Intertake Change Zone and the proposed changes to those text amendments. When we're inundated with information like that, it really, we really need time. It's a volunteer board. We really need time to review the information. So both your report from the critique as well as the one regarding buildable lot uh, review, I thought were very, very detailed and our commission members would need to have time to review that report. The other part of it is that we're trying not to go piecemeal when we do this evaluation of the IID zone. And in doing so, we actually have a correspondence from someone else that was submitted, I believe, back in November, but missing the November meeting. Um, that we're going to evaluate once we have the survey results in also, which is uh, what we put in and they end December 31st. So we will have those for our next meeting. However, what it did not convey to our CEO was to have the material posted and making sure that it was posted so that the members could start to review it as well as the general public. So again, that falls on my shoulders by not conveying that. Uh, it was a matter of uh, actually having, continuing to have uh, item 5C reports from C. Vidic on the agenda was, doesn't do anyone any service because I do want to invite you for a meeting to address those reports and share the information with us. Uh, but I do need to have the commission members fully vested and fully up to speed on the information that's there. So again, that falls on me and I do apologize for not getting those out and sending a mixed message here with having your uh, name and reports here on the correspondence, but not having, instructing the CEO to post that.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate it. I just wasn't sure what happened because it seemed odd that it's on the agenda, but it's not on the packet. So thank you so much. Now I under, at least understand.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your understanding. I appreciate it. And uh, again, I'm going to ask Mike to make sure uh, after the meeting today from tomorrow on to have those items posted. So, and I encourage all of the commission members to review uh, fully the two documents that will be posted uh, regarding the uh, IID zone for next month's meeting.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm not sure where it would be appropriate to comment. I, I do plan on going through each of the items under five and having discussions?
No, no, not under correspondence. We're under public comments right now.
Okay.
Any other uh, comments from the public? Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your input. We appreciate it. Um, bills, um, Mark, I know you're relatively new with working with the bills. I don't think you have any submissions.
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, and um, Mike, anything from you?
No new bills.
No new bills. Thank you. Okay, going on to item five, under correspondence, uh, we'll go through this relatively quickly and uh, starting with the items from CROG Capital Region Council of Governments. Um, I'm just going to hit the highlights on these. Of the 10 uh, notifications we got from CROG, four of those are similar to what we are discussing in our hearing tonight regarding a proposed zoning amendment regarding group daycare facilities, Ashford, Hebron, Newington, and Mansfield all have a proposed zoning amendment regarding group and family daycare facilities, uh, changes that they are proposing, uh, and they are uh, corresponding with the other connecting regions and towns, uh, that takes care of four of them. Uh, Bloomfield has a simple text amendment regarding removal of some car-centric uses such as car washes and gas stations from their District C. Hartford Planning and Zoning is an amendment related to 5G small cell nodes. Canton has proposed amendment regarding stormwater management regulations. Canton also has a proposed amendment regarding changing ground floor residential use prohibition uh, from on state roads through 44. Wyndham Planning and Zoning Commission has proposed zoning amendments regarding outdoor storage. And lastly, Farmington has proposed zoning amendment regarding accessory dwelling units. Uh, if you're really interested in finding out more, I suggest you go to those towns, go on their website and see what's up. Any questions on the CROG? Information? Nope. Moving on to the Mansfield referral. The Mansfield referral, notice of certain planning and zoning matters in neighboring municipalities. Uh, this too is regarding uh, similar to the hearing we'll be talking tonight, uh, regarding changes uh, that uh, the zoning regulations cannot treat any family childcare home or group child home located in a residence and licensed by the Office of Early Childhood pursuant in a manner different from a single or multifamily dwelling. Um, so again, theirs is very similar to what we'll be discussing tonight for Ashford. Uh, theirs is located under uh, 190-13 under definitions and it goes on and on for 19 pages. We will not review that at this point. Unless someone is dying to. I'll take that as not. Thank you very much. Moving on. Uh, reports from C. Vidic, I've already explained. Again, my apologies to the commission as well as the public at large. Uh, we will have that posted as quickly as we can and give the commission plenty of time to review and invite Mr. Vidic to attend in our uh, January meeting. Uh, Conservation Commission letters. We did receive a letter from November 30th, uh, from the Conservation Commission. I'll share that with you. Again, November 30th, 2023, having a vested interest in the future of Ashford, the citizen members of the Conservation Commission suggests expanding the POCD workforce from a consulting group and PZC members to include Ashford citizens and experts representing the nine POCD plan segments, governments, public safety, health education, economic development, housing, agriculture, natural resources, historic resources, and energy. This was successfully done for the 2005 POCD because of time constraints due to late start, the 2015 POCD had minimal citizen input. Representatives added to the 2025 POCD workforce could include but not be limited to members from our town, our furniture, future, excuse me, United Energy Task Force, Economic Development Commission, Board of Education, Fire Department, Conservation Commission, Agriculture Commission, Housing Authority, Babcock Library, Board of Finance, and the Historical Society. We also suggest that the 2025 POCD workforce be in place not later than January 15th, 2024, and first meeting take place not later than February 15th, 2024. This should give the workforce enough time to finish many tasks, review of current plans, review of other towns, POCDs, survey and public info sessions, focus input, focus public input, update and revise existing data maps and photos necessary to complete the POCD by the deadline. We can agree that we are all committed to developing a document that reflects Ashford citizens' vision for the future of our town. Thank you for our consideration of our suggestion, for your consideration of our suggestions, Conservation Commission. And I do appreciate the input by the Conservation Commission. Um, I did receive a short email uh, similar to this from Mike Gantik of Our Town, Our Future. And uh, I have a letter that we'll be going over later on, a draft to commissions and boards uh, requesting with a timeline that I am seeking input from the board for any changes and/or uh, some recommendations on times and dates. So we'll go over that under uh, item seven, under unfinished business.
Yeah, Jeff, I'd like to comment on the Conservation Commission's letter.
Yes.
It, it is in substantial error in, with regard to the POCD that was uh, last done. And the Conservation Commission should in particular be aware of, of that because they were specifically requested to make input to the POCD. And one of their section was one of the, the largest sections within the POCD. We had a working group that edited and worked to coalesce what was in the POCD. We didn't have a member from each one of those organizations sitting on the POCD. It, it was difficult enough, and I'm sure Jeff, you will recall, recall this because you were at many of the meetings. Just to get some of the people representing different, different aspects of, of the sections within the POCD to even come to some of the meetings or submit any information uh, in a timely fashion. In particular, I recall having numerous discussions with Susan Eastwood and company on the energy section and uh, only, you know, at the 11th hour did we get anything, had similar problems with the agricultural commission at the time, as far as getting input from them, uh, similar problems for the Historical Society. But the POCD working group had reached out to each of those uh, categories that are listed in this, this letter. And it was not because of lack of time. We did have a pretty tight timeframe, but we didn't necessarily ask that each of those people sit in and be at each meeting. And I think that would probably be a very unworkable if you had that larger number of people trying to, to develop the document. So ba, ba, basically, I, I, I strongly disagree with some of the premises that the Conservation Commission has put forth.
Okay, I thank you, Dick. Thank you for the input on that. And actually, I do remember, I think um, to that end, um, uh, Ray Fen, who was on the Conservation Commission, was part of the work group uh, at that point. So in this case, there was actually a member on there, but um, uh, and did share some information back then. But again, it wasn't so much as a full working group as you mentioned here. So, um, thank you for the input on that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you know, to actually physically develop this document. I rather doubt you can have a, a stand-in working committee of 12, 15 people. Having six or eight people that form the core and solicit and get input from each of the relevant sections makes it workable. And we did have excellent help from a young fellow, I can't recall his name, but he worked for NICOG at the time. And he was able to pull together a lot of the uh, statistical and map information. And there's a lot of just grinding kind of work to make this thing happen. And it's, it's, it's not something that you're, you're going to do with 12, 15 people around a table.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll talk on this a bit more from the unfinished business section, but thank you, Dick. Okay, uh, moving on to item six, the public hearing. And we will open the public hearing at 7:27 PM. This is regarding uh, Public Act 23-24. Um, and for us, it's an amendment to PZ-23-10. Uh, Dex Amendment to Section 300-17 pertaining to family childcare and group childcare homes. Uh, the public act in question from state, uh, which is effective October 1, 2023, again, Public Act 23-142 requires that all municipalities certified to the state that their zoning regulations do not treat any family childcare home or group childcare home located in a residence and licensed by the Office of Early Childhood pursuant to chapters 368A in a manner different from single or multifamily dwellings. This means they need to be allowed by right without the requirement that a commission level permit be obtained. And a public hearing cannot be held for that purpose. They go on to define family childcare home as well as group care home, group childcare home, excuse me. And we're talking again about section 300-17 of the Ashford Regulations on the public, uh, excuse me, Planning and Zoning Regulations under Residential Agricultural Zone RA. And specifically, the proposed changes to our regs fall under 300-17, section B, part G being added. Uh, the family childcare home or group childcare home as defined by Connecticut General Statute 19A77, thank you, Mike, which is licensed and complies with the standard set forth by the Connecticut Office of Early Childhood. There you go. So that is one change. And again, as the comments here, the language is proposed to include the new accessory use in the RA zone. By including this as a law of accessory use, it still requires the primary use of the property to be a dwelling unit. The other section is under C, section one. Uh, group daycare, group and child daycare centers has a primary use which provides care for 12 or more persons. And again, this language is intended to clarify that if you would like to operate a daycare as a primary use or care for more than 12 persons, you would still be required to obtain a special permit. And I think those are the two changes, Mike. Can you uh, check me if I'm wrong?
Nope, you're good. You're correct.
You're correct. Okay, so I open it up to discussion by the commission. Uh, I can tell, before I do that, I can tell you that we did respond to the state uh, from the Selectman's Office that we would uh, be in the process of uh, making changes to our regulations and then they would go through a hearing and such, plus do the proper uh, notifications going out. Uh, Luther, your hand is up. I'll stop talking.
Okay, uh, thanks, Jeff. Uh, I just uh, want to clarify that. So the PA 23-142, as you said, we, and I'm sorry, my clock's going to chime. If we, so we have to um, certify that regulations don't treat these uses differently than a regularly permitted residence. And I guess I just want to confirm that, I mean, we're, we're not treating them as a residence, we're treating them as, as an accessory use. So is that compliant? And, and uh, you know, we have uh, as a principal permitted use dwellings, but then accessory structures and accessory uses. So I just want to make sure that an accessory use would still be viewed by the state as not discriminating or treating this differently than a permitted residence.
I can jump in there if you want, Jeff.
Sure, and I think we're taking, speaking specifically more about section C than B in here. Because it's under B, our first state, our first change has a permitted use, whereas C, we're talking special permit use. Is that what you're referring to, both of them?
Sorry, I just immediately always mute myself again. So yeah, so I was looking at this under B permitted uses as an accessory use. And I mean, my understanding is, you know, this is compliant. I just want to kind of understand how an accessory use that requires the, a primary use of a, of a residence lumps it all together. Thanks.
And Mike, I'll, now I'll let you jump in to whatever section you want to discuss.
Yeah, so the reason we uh, included it as a subsection to six in permitted uses is based upon the fact that the law says that these operations, it qualifies that these operations have to be located within a dwelling unit. So it's not just, if somebody wanted to rent a space in a commercial building and take care of six kids, that they would not qualify under this act. It's specific to these family childcare group daycare homes located within a dwelling unit. So by placing it as an accessory use, they have to first demonstrate the primary use being a single family residence, which is required. And then, once they've demonstrated that, the permitting path is the same. So, so the, the act doesn't say you can't require anything. The, the act says you have to treat this the same way you treat uh, single family dwellings. So they would, someone getting a single, someone who was looking to build a, a home would come in and get a staff zoning permit. And that would be the same in this case.
Thanks, Mike. That makes a lot of sense the way you outlined that, that we want to make sure they're not just housing people in uh, you know, non-housing environments.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Dick.
Yeah, and I just wanted to have Mike comment. Yeah, and I just wanted to have Mike comment. It's my understanding, these small changes that you're making to our regulations would put us in compliance with the state's requirement. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, that that's that's the way they've been drafted, and that is what we convey to the state as required by the act.
And then, just for curiosity, how in hell did Mansfield figure out that they needed nineteen pages to do it?
I think that's just the way that that section is organized with the use tables, but we didn't need nineteen pages of regulations. They're treating it, they're taking basically the same approach as we are.
So basically, if we adopt what you put forth here, we will be in compliance.
That's, that is the way that I that I read it, yes.
Okay.
And Mike, I just noticed that in looking at Mansfield's piece, which happened to be your group also working with this, whereas they added new definitions to be added, I do see that on our data, our definitions, we simply identify group and child daycare centers, not the family childcare home. Are are we open to anything there? Or is it because it's dealt with in the reg itself? We don't need to define it necessarily?
Yeah, there there's there were uses were a bit more complicated in the types of uses they had defined and what they how they defined the various types of care facilities. So we had to fix the definitions because they didn't align with the state. So what the approach we're taking here is to just kick back to the Connecticut General Statutes so that if those definitions change, because this is all defined by the Office of Early Childhood, we don't need to then constantly be updating our standards based upon what the state's doing.
Right. And in one case, we define, we put the Connecticut General statute right in the definition or the description. And for the group daycare center, it's in the definition of what a group and childcare day center is with the same C G S identified. Okay. Any other statements, any other comments from the commission, questions, clarifications?
Looks fine to me.
Okay, hearing none. I open up to the public for any comment regarding this proposed change to the text amendment. And again, what I didn't do early on was identify the fact that the town of Ashford is the applicant in this case for the hearing. So that's why our last statement of the applicant is simply anything else from the commission at this point. Hearing no public comment and hearing nothing from the commission, I now go to close the public hearing. Mike, remind me, I know we've done the public hearings. We don't need a motion to close, correct?
A motion to close is best.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to close the hearing, please.
Motion to close.
Janet seconds.
Janet seconds. All those in favor of closing the public hearing from P Z twenty-three dash ten? I'll say aye. Those opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Thank you.
So Jeff, when will we vote on this being adopted?
We'll vote on this simply on number eight tonight.
Okay.
No, okay. All right, moving on. I did draft a letter in response to both the Conservation Commission and the Our Town, Our Future, talking about involving the different committees and stuff. So what I'd like to do is share that. Can I share, Mike?
Yep, should be all set.
Okay. There we go. Whoops. And where was I? Okay, so simply put, I'll read through this. Stop me when you've heard enough. No, I'll just read through this to the so-and-so board, the so-and-so commission, the so-and-so committee. By state statute, each town's plan of conservation and development, P O C D, needs to be updated every 10 years at a minimum. Ashford's two thousand fifteen P O C D is due for revision by July of two thousand twenty-five. Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission has the responsibility of gathering, collating, and editing the P O C D. To accomplish this task, we are asking each board, commission, and committee that has an identified section of the current P O C D to review their applicable section, sections of the plan for quality and accuracy of content, current updates to data, details, and status, and any other information that agency feels would be pertinent and informative for their section. Enclosed with the communication is a copy of the applicable section of the current P O C D of two thousand fifteen. As part of the review of your pertinent section, we ask that you also review the goals and objectives portion for updates, successes, obstacles, and newly identified goals and how your agency is working to achieve those goals. We strongly encourage your agency to attempt multiple discussions within your meetings and to gain any public input that would be beneficial to your organization. Your information does not need to be of any particular format. It could be narrative, bulleted points, charts, graphs, tables, or simple edits of the section of the current P O C D. Obviously, the more information and background you provide, the more the P Z C can gain understanding of the goals of the agency for that section in developing the information for publication. Planning and Zoning Commission would like to start gaining this information. This is where I'm looking for dates that's viable in the spring of two thousand twenty-four. Each agency must submit their information at that time, and if they would like to present their submission to the P Z C, we would be, we would gladly add them to our agenda or even hold special meetings for multiple agencies to present. We would like to have all information be submitted by, this is where I'm looking for input. While P Z C is charged with the generation and submission of the P O C D to the state, development of this document is an important townwide charge, not only, not only to, I need to add two in there, meet the requirements of the state, but to provide a vision for the town and to use it as a guideline going forward. Thank you for your time and attention in this vital issue to our community, and I look forward to any information you choose to share with P Z C. If you have any questions regarding this communication or your role in the development of the P O C D, please contact me at yada, yada, yada. So I'm looking for both input clarity and dates from the commission. Let me add in my two here, if I can edit this document. To me. Richard?
I don't know if you recall, but we had one devil of a time getting N E C O G to give us a Word version of the P O C D. All that they initially had given us was a PDF version. Finally, Michael, Michael, we so quickly lose our retired Z E O.
Mike Gardner, yeah.
Mike, yeah, get a lot of mics. He physically went up to N E C O G with a a thumb drive and got them to put the Word document. I don't know if you, if you have it or know where that is within everything. You know, I think I can dig up a a copy of it someplace if you don't have it. But it'd be best to send that Word version out to the people to start doing markups.
I wasn't looking to give them a hard copy. I do believe I have a copy of that in my files here. I'm not looking to reinvent the wheel or type everything over again, so I'll be looking for that. If I don't, I think Chris Abicoff might have a copy also, so I'll be following up on that. But thank you, Richard.
Yep.
If I run aground, I'll call you, I'll give you a call.
Yeah, I think I've got one someplace. I just need to go through my, and I do have it electronically.
Yep, very good. Thank you. Mark?
I'm just following up on on what Dick said. I mean, I write textbooks and edit for a living. So if you're going to send out a Word doc, you better enable editing. So it color codes, you know, who who puts the input? Because if you don't have that enabled before you send it out, people are going to start typing in your their changes, and you won't know what they are.
Know what the change is, right? Exactly. Hi, Janet.
Hi, I'm thinking about the date, the deadline for dates. And if we give, you know, our meetings are not at the end of the month. If we, if we gave people five months, then our deadline might be for June of next year. And it would probably take a couple, at least a couple special meetings to go through all of it, which means we wouldn't get it done until July or August. But if we had all of the reports done by August, I think that would give us a good, a good head start for getting, getting it put together.
Okay, so you're thinking all information submitted by August of two thousand twenty-four?
Well, I was thinking, asking the boards and commissions to submit the information by the end of May. So by by the end of May, which gives people five months. And we'd have June, July, and August to to work on it and hopefully get everything done by August. And and perhaps offer assistance to groups that were having, having trouble getting theirs completed.
Right, right. And also, you know, reaching out to them, keeping the communication open, that they can, you know, reach out to us, reach out to, again, one of the other pieces on here too, is that I am working right now with negotiating with Taike about being our consultant on this as well as pulling a lot of this information together for us. And we're just trying to figure out what the work that's comfortable with that and how much work the board will be doing for us too. And we'll take any help we can get. As Dick has already laid out, it's not an easy situation to do in a vacuum or do as the board. So having Taike to help us would be a great thing if we can get, come to an agreement on that and identify the funds for that.
Yeah, good. Yeah.
Well, no, I I agree with you on it would be great if Taike could help us and especially having access to getting graphs and maps and statistics for us. I think at some point, we need to have a a smaller group to put everything together and work on all that wording for the introduction and all that, that good stuff that goes into it as well. And I I think, like Dick said, it's hard to do it with a huge, a huge committee. And I don't think the Conservation Commission meant for everyone to get involved in in the whole process, but for every board to be involved in working on their own parts.
That is something that I gathered both from that as well as Mike Antic's email as to what they were looking to do to gain the involvement of the groups themselves to work on those areas that are specific to them.
And I, and I think that in that, that 10 years ago, I speak for myself as well, I think not everyone understood the importance of the P O C D. And certain recent developments have made people more aware of it. So I'm hoping that boards and commissions will be more energized to to work on it, understanding its importance.
Okay. Luther?
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, I'll I'll echo a couple of things. Date wise, I don't see any reason that Janet's date suggestions would not work. I think that's being pretty generous to boards and commissions to give them a five-month window to review their section. And I think if anything, it might encourage them to really focus on the work we're asking them to do, which is their area of expertise or advisement. You know, I can say, you know, speaking as the chairman of the Ag Commission, the Ag Commission is not going to robustly critique and offer suggestions on things outside of our purview because that is not our charter. That is not what the town has empowered us to do. So, you know, hopefully it keeps people focused on their areas to not give them, you know, a year to do this. I would also very strongly, very strongly echo Mark in his editorial recommendations that I would even go so far as to include as part of this communication, a writing sample of how to edit and markup and notate the portions, you know, take, take any suggested language of the P O C D, the intro, anything, and provide them a reference of how to markup and track changes and and do those things, because some of these people may not be familiar with it. Give them a writing standard by which they can reference. And then the the final part of that, to me, this has been a challenge for most working groups. And I don't think this is a group that's exempt from this, is version control becomes a real critical path to success. When we've done regulation changes in the past, when we've done P O C D work in the past, everyone being on the same version at the same time, seeing the same material in the same way, is going to be another critical path to this being a successful exercise. So I think having a singular point of distribution and having a single master copy with really good date stamp, version control stamp type information on it is going to help set us up to be successful.
Thank you for that. And I did hear Mark volunteer to offer up that example of how to do the proper markups and all that.
Oh, yeah, I can, I can bury him with information.
There you go. Well, I don't want to do that, but I want to make it at least. No, that would be great because, Mark, you did say you have the experience with that. And by offering up, as Luther said, an example of what they can do and how they can do it. And again, they can have some subject matter experts to reach out to, to deal with that for those groups that don't have a person involved in their work that can work with that. You have a comment, Mark?
I do. I don't have a problem with the May deadline Janet set. But an August deadline with summer vacations for the committee would be early August. I think that might be aggressive.
I was thinking about the summertime, too. September might actually be a a more likely timeframe. People are getting back in the swing of things and they'll, they'll likely be more responsive for making sure they have it in by that deadline.
Correct.
August would be great, but it's kind of a pipe dream, I think, with, as you said, with vacations and such. Dick?
Okay. I want to just weigh in a little bit on some things I've said before, but I want to say them again now. Jeff, it's very commendable that you send this letter out. But I assume you are not proposing that you be the leader of developing the P O C D. Yeah. You need to get someone that agrees to spearhead this. And and then you need a group of volunteers, and I would say six or eight is probably the maximum that's workable. When we were in the throes of developing this, you know, the previous one, we were meeting in the seniors center at least every other week, and sometimes every week. The fellow from N E C O G, which I assumed that Mike Di Amato's organization is going to be providing similar input, they would come up with the consolidated version. Sometimes we'd be working on one or two sections at a meeting. Sometimes we'd, you know, be looking at the total sections. Usually, we would end up with electronic copies to look at and and go over and mockup before we came to the meetings. But it is a pretty intense thing, and someone needs to to lead that charge. And I don't know if you've been trolling to try to find someone to do that, Jeff, but I didn't, I'm not volunteering for it. I'm, I'm out of the I didn't, you know, I'm not volunteering for it. I'm I'm onto the saddle for those types of things right now to say the least. But you know, y- you you need to get someone that will step up. And it doesn't necessarily have to be someone that is a a member of the planning zoning commission.
Yes, this is this is a true statement because again, there were a number of members on the uh last work group that were not planning and zoning. Uh just other concerned citizens, so.
As I decide, like back then uh he's since gone off to the wilds of New Hampshire, but. Bill Darcy was a tremendous help of pulling together a lot of the nitty gritty things on that group.
Any other comments? So um the wording is okay, we will fix, we will add in some of the uh. Suggested dates. I'll change the uh spring of two thousand twenty four to a more specific date. Um and put in the probably September of two thousand twenty four as the drop dead date for submissions to us. Otherwise, we write it ourselves. Um also, right now, based on Dixon foot, I'd also like to say um. Is there anyone win the commission right now that is a uh? Without being strong armed in any way, uh is interested in being on the committee for. Developing the P O C D from a P Z C standpoint. Let me go off a stoppage sharing here.
Yeah, I'd be interested in doing it, Jeff.
Janet? I too am throwing my name into the ring to work on this too.
I'd like to think I'll have bandwidth. I I will certainly stay engaged and and I'd like to, you know, have further conversations about being able to help. You know, so long as things don't get, you know, seasonally, things get crazy for me.
If we don't get anything from you, we'll just kick you off. Don't worry.
That's fine, that's fine.
Yep, if if my uh. Health were a bit on the better side, I'm still trying to recover from the back surgery. And I'm standing up as we speak now. Sitting for a long period of time is very difficult for me. And uh I I can handle these Zoom meetings, but uh doing the kinds of things that that I did previously. When this was done the last time, I don't think I'm I'm up up to doing that right now.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dick. Appreciate that.
For sure, offer my two cents worth and opinions, but uh.
Obviously, it will come back to the group. It's not just gonna go off from the committee itself. It'll go uh out to the group. Um. So at this point in time, for those people that uh I'm gonna solicit from the community there, is there anyone in the community not on the commission? Uh who would be interested in working on the P O C D development? Since I have a captive audience.
I'm interested. I've been writing science papers all my life, um well published. I would be interested in working on it.
Tell them you're on O T O.
I'm interested.
Yep, I have you down. Thank you, Nora. Thank you, Christine. All right, very good. Thank you. Uh. Thank you for the input. So we have a a base group here. Uh.
I don't think Mike Gantic is physically here.
I I I'll be having a request out to him also. I didn't expect to form a committee tonight, but uh in the formation of it, I will be reaching out to O T O F also.
Yeah, and also the uh E- the E D C was uh had several people that participated in the last one. So you like to speak to to, you know, Margaret Shady.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, uh thank you for the input. Thank you for the volunteers. Um and as uh Dick mentioned, uh it is. A more intense effort. So those of you that do have the time to share, again, we will be bringing your information back to the board. Um Mike and I will be having some discussions also, trying to find out the role of uh Taike. Actually, the role for both groups and how we're gonna move forward on that. So. Um again, thank you for your input. We appreciate it.
N E C O G was extremely helpful in that they had a young fellow that was very good at writing. And he pulled all of the stuff together from all of various parts. So you know, if uh. You know, uh Mike's organization can provide that same level of service. Uh to this, I think that would be very helpful.
I'm extremely confident because I know uh Mike's group has provided this and this type of work for other towns. Uh in the past. Um I can also tell you the feedback that I've gotten most recently, nothing to say against N E C O G or something, but they are a. Over extended resources right now for the the amount of programs that they're trying to deal with and so. I don't, I haven't heard of any intern availability, nor have I heard of uh staffing that's available for a lot of the other town issues that they're dealing with right now. So. Uh I'm hoping that uh the more focused uh consultant from uh Taike can uh help us get through this. Probably, I'm I'm imagining better than N E C O G might be able to do uh with the professional nature of their business and what they've done, their experience in the past.
Yeah, and I would echo that uh um. One of the problems we ran into with some elements of N E C O G, uh not with the young intern, but. Other uh management peoples at N E C O G is they often wanted to uh. Write like they were the uh members of the town in terms of uh make it input to to this plan. And that was not what we were looking for. We were looking for them to do the mechanics, not not the opinions.
Right, right, exactly. Thank you. Okay, and what I'm going to do is uh I'll get that letter put together and um. I'd like to try and get it out just after January eighth. Uh just after our meeting, I'll have the fat last look see by the committee, uh excuse me, by the commission. On our January eighth meeting and then have the letter out for the January ninth is what my goal would be on that. Because again, we have to develop the sections, make sure we can call up the electronic sections of each plus uh add in some of the editing. So uh I'll talk with Mark on uh. How to give some instruction on uh markup and tracking changes. Okay, moving on to uh new business under item eight, uh P Z C twenty three dash ten. Text amendment to section three hundred dash seventeen pertaining to family childcare and group childcare homes. Um gonna run this a little different. Uh looking for a motion to approve the changes to um. Three hundred dash seventeen to meet the Connecticut state statutes. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll I'll move that.
Dick Williams to approve. Is there a second?
Janet, I'll second.
Janet's second. And now I'm opening up to discussion. This is really how other meetings tend to go. We tend to go discussion first and then have our motions. Um but uh is there any discussion on this? Concerns. Hearing none. Uh I'll move for a vote. All those in favor of accepting the text amendment changes to meet the state statute for section three hundred dash seventeen. Say signify by saying aye. Abstentions. Thank you. Uh moving on now to P Z dash twenty three dash eleven. This is for receipt only. A special permit renewal. For short term rental at twenty one Lakeside Drive. Mike, I know this is just a receipt, but do you have any comment on this at this point?
No, so the application was submitted and is complete, so um it'll be received tonight and it will be scheduled for consideration at the January meeting.
Okay, very good. Um so is there a motion to receive?
Motion to receive.
Thank you, Jerry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dick Williams. All those in favor of receiving this motion or excuse me, receiving this uh special permit request? Aye, thank you. All those opposed? Abstentions. Okay, so moved. Thank you very much.
I'm not sure where we get this, but. In preparation for the next meeting, uh we should, you know, ask the question. You know, how have things gone? Has there been any problems with?
That will be part of our, that'll be part of our discussion. Absolutely. We'll help. I'll ask Mike for a report for any updates or anything. Again, we're just receiving the motion now, but thank you. Uh zoning officer report, Mike.
Uh so I think since the last meeting, you know, we worked on obviously getting the survey prepared, getting that all situated on the website and everywhere else. I've also been working with the town clerk's office on um. Like a a pending R F P um for updates or a comprehensive update to the town's website. So it's taken a chunk of time and and about three weeks ago, we transitioned to a new building official. Um so we've been working on uh getting him all up to speed on on permits and and everything that was pending.
Is that's, I'm sorry, Mike, is that still out of Jim Rupert's group? Is he affiliated with them still?
So when Jim moved to be the town administrator, they hired uh the assistant building official out of Avon, Rich McKinnon. So Rich McKinnon and Randy Heckman uh ran those inspections for the four towns they cover. Um Randy, who covered Ashford, um is now the building official for the town of Coventry. So um they're in the process of filling that position, so Rich has been covering. So we've been getting, you know, folding him into the mix and and getting him synced up with. All the pending current projects and and all that kind of stuff.
So this is, this is an interim move is what you're saying.
Yeah, they will um they will hire somebody else um. So that they are back to having two building officials to cover those multiple towns out of Bolton.
Okay, thank you.
Just as a comment, uh. Did some they so- someone have a comment besides, oh my god? The people sometimes complain about zoning officials and heaven regulations and building inspections and such. Uh our neighbor Eastford has just about nothing. And uh the you, if you drive to Eastford, you may have seen some new construction along the road between Westford and Eastford. Uh there's some of the new homes that have been built there. At least one of them and possibly all of them. Uh the builder decided to uh uh vent all of the uh waste gases. From the toilets, et cetera, into the attic and not go all the way through the roof. So the whole house smells like a sewer. And they're trying to track down the builder and they can't find the builder and the people are. Pretty much, you know, second air. So we may complain at times about all the hoops people have to jump through. To do things in our town or the surrounding towns, but it's a whole lot better than the the mess that Eastwood's got going for themselves.
Okay. Uh Luther, you had a question of Mike?
No, I just had an accolade for Mike. I just wanted to say I personally thought that the survey came together brilliantly. Great job. I took it. It ran flawlessly. Thank you very much. I think it's a great survey.
And Janet?
Am I muted? No, I'm not muted. Um I'd like to thank, you know, Mike and Jeff for all their work, but I I do have a complaint. Um that the survey was not given to the commission in advance. I don't know whether it's my age or just the way my brain works, but I really have a hard time looking at something in. Real time and, you know, processing it. I like time to to look at things and think about them. So I. I'm just requesting that in the future, you know, we be given at least a couple days to look at stuff. Not just at the meeting. And you gave us our, you gave us the letter at our meeting, but at least, you know, we have until January to approve it, so we can think about it, Jeff. So thank you for that.
Well, yeah, I mean, it was just a draft and seeking your input and giving us, you know, the next meeting to approve it. So you have time to give further input along those lines. Okay, uh Mike, do you have a number for the survey right now approximately?
Uh yeah, as of right now. We have one hundred and ninety submissions.
Hundred and ninety, thank you. And again, that goes until December thirty first.
That's that's more than we got for the housing survey. We ran that for how long uh uh? Over a month, I think, so.
Yeah, it was longer than that, yeah.
Pretty good response so far, I'd say.
Okay, uh.
I have a question for Mike.
Yes, go ahead, Nora.
What's the pro- is what's the status on the uh mead property that burned down and it's a slay in there?
We did, so. Trying to keep it simple for the sake of the meeting, but the the challenge with that property, number one, is that once, once it was fenced. Uh it meets the standards for safety per the building code. So as long as there's some barrier, no matter how pitiful it may be. Um under the building code, they have done what they need to do to make safe. Um so there's not anything that the building department can do as far as the structure. We do not have. Property maintenance or blight or anything like that standards. Either via ordinance or regulation in town. There's 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 very little that we can do. I did issue him. Um a violation notice, um which is currently pending for some of the things that you'll see outside, but. It's still very limited because of what. Sort of limited mobility, the zoning regulations have when it comes to addressing things like that, but. Um the health department has gone out and looked at the property to make sure that there's no issues with septic or any other things pertaining to sort of the environmental side. So we're we're working within the very, very limited confines of what we can do.
And and Mike, um in most towns, your experience, blight falls under general town statutes or planning and zoning?
Basically, by statute, blight has to be an ordinance. It can be, it can ultimately be enforced by whoever the legislative body appoints. Could be health department, building official, zoning officer. Could be anybody, but. But the statutes come under chapter ninety eight, which is municipal power, so it has to be an ordinance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, Mike, this happened before your time here. Uh and I don't recall the fellow's name, but there was a. Uh and I saw on eighty nine where a fellow was just boarding stuff like crazy. And eventually the town got him to clean up everything. And and this was probably back ten years ago. Uh does anyone else remember the details of how that was done?
Yeah, I I believe you're talking about the property owned by John Wolf uh off of eighty nine there. And I believe, I have to find out, I I I don't want to tell tales out of school. I believe it had to do more with the back taxes type thing than. Uh going in because actually the town went in, I believe, and cleaned that up. Uh afterwards, it wasn't the owner at that time. Um and they went in after, again, I believe it was a tax issue. But I I'll see if I can get confirmation on that.
Yeah, it is is this property that we're talking about now uh occurring on taxes?
Last I was, last I knew they were, yes.
Nora, did you have anything else?
No.
No, okay. All right, anything else for Mike? Hearing nothing, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Jerry, second by
Second.
Second by Luther. All those in favor? Not even asking for an abstention. All right. Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful, safe holiday. Everyone be well. And we'll hit the ground running in two thousand twenty four. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, thanks.